Now, I'll call the meeting of the Carbon County Board of Commissioners. No order. Please rise for a moment of silence, prayer, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father bless us as we gather for this meeting. Guide our minds and hearts so we work for our county. Teach us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States.
One nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. Approval of the minutes of the previous meetings held September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the special meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yeah, Show Me is not voting for the September eighteenth meeting since I was absent, but I do vote yes on the September fourteenth meeting. Okay, are there any guests concerning county business at this time? If you could please state your name and purpose today. Mr. Locker?
Okay, my name is Dennis Locker. I'm from Lee Heaton. Certainly, it's an honor to be in front of you gentlemen. Never done this before. But I'm here, what I feel, representing some of the taxpayers in Lee Heaton and also Carbon County. There's a program that the business in Lee Heaton has brought forth that they would like Lee Heaton to pass a LERTA program. And LERTA, if you don't recognize it, is a local economic revitalization tax assistance program. It was passed by the Commonwealth back in nineteen seventy-seven. Unfortunately, when the Commonwealth passed this legislation, they never funded it. They pushed it back on all the municipalities and school districts in their taxing programs to fund this program. It's an abatement program that works over ten years, starting with zero taxes the first year, going all the way back, going up to a hundred percent taxes. Unfortunately, these are going to be businesses for profit. So businesses for profit are going to be assisted by not paying taxes. And what happens is, when those taxes aren't paid by the business, it's going to come back on the taxpayer. And with each community, the school district, the township, the county, has a budget, and they don't meet their budget because these taxes aren't coming in. They can't get it from these businesses. They're going to come back to the taxpayer. And that is my concern and fellow taxpayers concerned that these taxes will not, you know, our taxes will go up to fund these businesses. There is no, I spoke with, yes, I got a brain fade, but our commissioner, or not our commissioner, but anyway, the, there's no way to collect these taxes. If the businesses go for five years, there's no way to get these taxes back. So there's such a risk to this program that I don't feel that it's worthy. And I feel that the commissioners and the taxpayers should be aware of this before we would adopt a program like this. So I'm hoping that you gentlemen also do some research on this program and find out that I don't think it's worthy of us in Carbon County, in Lee Heaton School District, and the Borough of Lee Heaton to move forward on this type of a program.
Just some quick comments on that. I do believe that for this to go through, all three entities would have to vote in favor. The school district, the borough in this case, and the county as well. So to my knowledge, neither of the other parties have voted on it yet, to my knowledge.
Lee Heaton, I was at their meeting, the borough meeting, and they tabled the discussion because they weren't really knowledgeable of the program. It was just brought to their attention, and I think they were ready to adopt it. Now they tabled it. And I'm sure you're also aware that Comerlin was also approached with this program. And I believe, well, the borough, the school district, and you gentlemen also denied them the request to install this LERTA program. So I'm sure you are familiar with it. So that's why I just wanted to bring it to your attention, fully heightened. I am a businessman. I know Wayne knows me. I've been a business person for over fifty years. I'm still in business. I support businesses. And the best way to support businesses in our communities, in our township, borough, everything, is buy local. That's the way we support and keep our businesses, by purchasing local.
And I think I want to go one step further than that, too. Under like this LERTA program, it is for the new building that they're getting that tax deferment on. But in a case like that, they could be taxed maybe, say, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in a year. So what they're going to do, they could rip a building down, work out of a camper, and then we're losing that taxes on the original building in the first place. So if we would have ten businesses like that come in, and once one gets started, it's going to just have a ripple effect right across the entire Lee Heaton area there. Lee Heaton School District could lose a couple hundred thousand dollars taxes in the first year. And I don't think the school districts or the borough realize how that can be devastating to the taxing entities. And like you said, it's going to go back to the taxpayer that lives in that town. Where are they going to make that two hundred thousand dollars? It's going to be you and I.
And that's what I really want everyone to be knowledgeable of. I think when they come up with these programs, it's great. It sounds good. But they don't understand all the remedies that need to take place. And one of the things, there's a lot to read into this. One of the things I was just saying about demoing buildings. According to the rules of this program, it does not allow demolition of buildings. So, you know, I don't understand, you know, it would mean someone coming in, putting up a complete, I'd love to see a company come in here with a hundred employees. What would help this, support our communities. But Lee Heaton doesn't even have the footprint to put an additional building of that size to take on that many employees. So that's my cause of being here today. Thank you very much.
Do you have any fear that without LERTA, no investment will be made in the particular facility on four forty-three? And thus, you know, the downside might be worse than accepting it?
Well, the other thing that maybe you gentlemen aren't aware of, the business plan of the auto industry, the business plan that I was in with my motorcycle business, is the manufacturers today are downsizing the mom-and-pop type of franchises. They only want corporate dealerships. I don't know how long these, the standalone dealership like Lee Heaton Ford, you know, and I don't want to lose Lee Heaton Ford because I'm a Ford person. But I don't know how long they can stay there. I mean, they're going to be just eaten up because the, all the industries only want corporate dealership. See, hook of Ford, forty-one dealerships, twenty-five brands. Take our local McDonald's. McDonald's in Lee Heaton is owned by a person that owns fifteen McDonald's. They, no one has single stores. Everything is owned by the big corporations. And that's what's going to happen. And I'm afraid that if they start on a building, you know, how long would it be until they would be taken over? And then this, again, this tax money would be lost because it doesn't transfer to a new owner.
Bring up a good point about the dealerships. What do we have left in Carbon County? I think one. How many we had over the years?
We lost Chevrolet, Cadillac, Pontiac, Lincoln, Mercury, Dodge.
Nissan.
Buick we had.
Yeah, Nissan. We lost all those. We have Kia, and we have Ford. And I'd hate to see them lost, but I, again, not at the cost of the taxpayers.
And now, just for the point of, you know, that you're aware, we have not formally received a request yet.
Oh, you haven't?
We know we have not. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention.
I don't think I'll stay for the rest of the meeting. You have a large agenda. Thank you very much.
Are we that boring?
No, I'll tell you what, if you'd like, I'll stay. It'll be an education.
This meeting will be short, I think.
Next item is the report of executive sessions.
They were none held.
The department reports the budget transfers?
Move to approve.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations? Expenditures, approval of check numbers, two three eight six four seven, three two three eight seven six nine, for the general fund clearing account, totaling two million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars, seventeen cents.
Motion approved. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
The treasurer's report?
Move to accept. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
The personnel report for county departments?
Motion approved. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Acknowledgements for courts and rural offices?
Motion acknowledged. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Human services, for approval and execution, the agreement between the county and the Community Action Committee of the Lehigh Valley Incorporated, Second Harvest Food Bank, to provide services as a lead agency under the Emergency Food Assistance Program from October one, two thousand twenty-three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Insurance for ratification. Acceptance of the renewal for the special risk accident coverage for county volunteers for the period of October one, two thousand twenty-three to October one, two thousand twenty-four. Carrier is Gerber Life Insurance Company through the CCAP insurance programs. Annual premium, four hundred dollars, which represents no increase.
Move to ratify. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Liquid fuels, Bridge Four, for acceptance, proposal from Carbon Engineering Incorporated of Summit Hill, Pennsylvania, to make the necessary repairs to the deck of Bridge Number Four, Griss Mill Road over Quake Creek in Packer Township, in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Once completed, the county will purchase and place barriers on both sides of the bridge to restrict vehicular traffic on these portions of the bridge, as well as changing the weight limit posting from ten ton to three tons.
Move to accept. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
Purchase service agreement, for approval and execution, purchase a service agreement under the Sourcewell Contract Number zero three, zero three, two, one, with Edwards Business Systems of Wyomissing, Pennsylvania, for the Biz Hub Color Copier at a total cost of one thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars, seventy-three cents, showing a point zero zero six zero one for black and white copies, and point zero five five six five per color copy billed quarterly, located in the District Attorney's Office. Maintenance will be fixed for the first three years with a five percent increase each year thereafter.
Move to approve and execute. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
The solicitor's report?
Thank you. Under the correctional facility, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Carbon County Career and Technical Institute and, excuse me, and the County of Carbon to provide adult basic education and career pathways, educational services, to criminal offenders to attain their high school equivalency diploma at the Carbon County Correctional Facility. Services are provided at no cost to the county, funding to be secured by CCTI through the Lehigh County Community College, from the PA Department of Education Act two thirty-one federal literacy grant to serve sixteen to twenty offenders in the facility for the period September twenty, to September twenty, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved and executed. Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nocstein?
Yes.
And for the courthouse renovation project, seeking a motion for approval and execution of change order number eight to the agreement with Boyle Construction Management of Allentown, Pennsylvania, for Geringer, that's Geringer Mechanical of Boyerstown, to have Beth Allen scaffold and equipment of Allentown, erect an overhead pedestrian sidewalk protection on the Broadway side of the courthouse. This change order, in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred dollars, will bring the new contract total to eight hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars, fifty cents.
And I'm going to second this on a little bit of discussion on this. And I think when this project started off, I did make a motion that every time we have a change order, I think they should come in here and explain it to us and to the public. And this is one of the things, and I know it's a safety issue, and to me, this should have been in the project. Because just like how we've done the projects actually here at the building, Tremco came in, they had an old diagram of how this was done, the safety equipment that was supposed to be in place. In fact, you can't see it on this little picture, but there was a walkway to get into this building. It was barricaded off. There was safety in mind. And on these, these change orders that we have all the time, we have, there been built into this project, is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in contingency. Every time we do a change order, it comes out of contingency. And this should be in these blueprints when it's done. I mean, Tremco did it. I think we have to follow through with this. And I keep going on this all the time. That every time we give money away, thirty-nine hundred dollars would actually give two employees at eighteen dollars an hour, six percent raise. It costs nineteen hundred and sixty-five dollars for that person for the entire year, which would be thirty-nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. And we have contingency in here for three hundred eighty-five, three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And then when we get to doing our taxes in another month from now, we're going to say, you know what? We got to raise our taxes because we want to give it to the employees. Right here is the money for the employees. And we have to continue, we continue doing this all the time, and there's always an excuse. This project here, like over this traffic thing, I think has been going on since September fifth. It's not supposed to start till the twenty-fifth, and it's always, oh, we have to get this done right away. We have to get it done right away. Before they did these plans, it should have been in these plans, that that was, what were they going to do? Give everybody a hard hat that walked by the building? I mean, when this building was done here, if you look it up, every day we get a daily report, there was railing up, there was barriers down below to protect people. Alls we do on all of these projects like this one that's coming up, we forget about the important things that are coming in. And the contingency for the general construction was seventy-five thousand dollars. That two days before, that they had the change order before the bids were actually open on third, on that Thursday, they added fifteen thousand dollars on for that electrical room door. That added to the contingency. So the contingency should have actually been seventy-five thousand. Now it's ninety thousand. And these companies come in here like this, and it's not the ones that are getting the bids that are getting the bids. These, the people that are putting these building diagrams and whatever has to be done at the buildings, just keep doing this to us all the time. And like I said, you watch through all this whole project, that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of contingency will be eaten up. And again, that's what I said, we got to stop wasting our money, and we're making too many excuses that, oh, well, this got to be, everything got to be done. And I go back to it again, Tremco did this building and had all the safety precautions in it. Now we're making excuses for the courthouse. And we know where the entrance for the courthouse goes. We know what part of the roof was being built or what was being repaired. And I go back to it again, what was this company going to do? Give everybody a hard hat as a walk-by? This is standard OSHA procedure to protect the public when they come to our buildings. If you would, if you would look at this, I can send this report to the media. They give us, every time, every day, they would give us a report, the railing is up. Something was contained. They put stuff here. They put the lift. They had a secure place to put the lift. We're working on this after the project bids are open. Why is that? And I think even like on the bids, what does it look like to other contractors that come in here? When they come in and they bid on a, on a job, and they want to give us a price on it, and they could be a couple hundred thousand dollars over everybody else. Until we get done with the project, it's four hundred thousand dollars more than that they would want it. So where is this fair on the bidding projects? I just don't see it. You know, I think this has to be looked in, and I'm not, and I'll tell you what, this safety precautions has to be put in. And I'm thinking like, this change order is for Boyle Construction to do this. Boyle Construction should have had this in the project, and this should get done for the safety, which it is. They can't get away with that. If OSHA would come here tomorrow, and they would start without this, they would shut the project down. And they know that. But they know that we can keep doing these change orders. And like I said, we're given, we have enough money here on these projects to give everybody. Now, we have contracts for the salaries. to give everybody, now we have contracts for the salaries. But everybody that doesn't have a contract in this, I think we have a hundred, hundred and some employees, we could give every employee in this county a dollar raise this year. And that's the bottom line. And I'm not, and I'm not, uh, and I think everybody go, sees where I'm going with this, I am voting no for this because I tell you what, they gotta step their, their game up. We hired them to do a job. I didn't hire them to do a job to do it halfway. I hired them to do a job. And we had the administrator, she's calling here, she's calling the police department or whoever she's calling. That's not her job, she has daily operations to take care of. We hired Boyle Construction to do this job, not her, not the attorney, or none of the commissioners. That's not, that's not our job. If they don't wanna ha- handle the job and do it the right way, then you know what, let's get somebody else. And that's all I have to say to that. I'm ready for the vote.
Hold on. So Commissioner Arner, Commissioner Nozino also, who reviewed, uh, the bid for us? Was it Carbon Engineering?
No.
No.
No, that was Boyle.
Boyle, Boyle reviewed the bid for us.
They secured the proposal for the roof repairs.
Alright, alright. And they, they failed to notice that there was a lack of safety, uh, implementation, uh, in the bid. Alright.
Did Boyle do the roof bids or did somebody else do the roof bids that separately? Because the roofing company?
Boyle did everything.
Boyle did.
Okay.
They, they did have someone use a drone.
Drone, yeah.
And based on the drone coverage, that's where they determined where the repairs needed to be made. But Boyle secured the proposal.
From the roofing company?
From the roofing.
Okay.
And we're not talking about something when they get into something and they get out of place where there's a piece of wood routed, and you have a change order. These are things that OSHA would have shut them down. If they would have started work on that roof and had a crane on the road, that would have been the end of them. OSHA would have said, you know what, shut that equipment off and get out of here. That's what would have happened. And, and we just neglect that all the time, and we keep adding money and money and money on. And like I said, this thing here with this contingency, where it added on to this GC project, fifteen thousand dollars, that was a change order before we even started the project. You know, and then I think like even like Mr. Blocker sitting here, like he's talking about the taxes going up with that. Imagine what every time we waste four hundred thousand dollars in this county on projects.
Any further comments?
No.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasevich?
While I agree that Boyle has failed us in their ability to property advise the board of commissioners, I think the risk is too great, uh, to allow, uh, this project to be delayed. I think there's a higher probability of another, uh, uh, piece of roofing, uh, coming down and potentially endangering the public. So I will vote yes, we need to move forward unfortunately.
Mr. Nozstein?
With that and the condition of the roof now, we do have tiles falling, so it does need to be corrected. We all had a chance to review the bid specs ourselves.
Yep.
And we're just as guilty for not catching that on the.
I don't, and you know what, Wayne, you keep making excuses like that. We hired this company to look at the bids. If I wanted to do that, I would have resigned, and I would have bid on this project, and I could have been the project manager. We asked them to look at a job for us. And when we hire people, we expect that responsibility out of every contractor that comes in here. None of them are exempt from it, and that's what it is, we go back, well, now we gotta do it because of the safety reason. That should have been in their contract. And I don't know, maybe they don't know the OSHA rules that you have to contain. You know, like I said, maybe there's a wrong one, and I said, we keep making excuses all the time, and it sounds like it's only thirty-nine hundred dollars, but thirty-nine hundred dollars times ten, twenty, thirty times is a lot of money.
Mr. Nozstein?
I will, yes.
Alright, uh, next for the emergency operations and training center, uh, seeking a motion to adopt a resolution, uh, uh, thirty of two thousand twenty-three to authorize the execution and filing of an application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for an LSA grant in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars, sixteen cents to be used for thermal imaging cameras, propane training and propane-related equipment at the Carbon County Emergency Operations and Training Center in the borough of Nesquahoning.
Move to adopt the next.
I'll second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nozstein?
Uh, yes, and this is similar to the grant we applied for before, uh, we were denied. We got that letter about a week and a half ago, we were denied the application previously. And I'm now filing for an LSA grant, you know, and trying to, another avenue. One thing I wanna point out on that as well, that Bulldog Fire Apparatus in Nesquahoning donated, uh, about three thousand dollars worth of, uh, what we call, uh, burn cribs for the burn tower, and the County Fire Association is buying it to additional ones, so, uh, we're looking at different ways how we can honor those people, uh, for giving this type of donation. So they stepped up to the plate, they made a three thousand dollar donation. It was a prototype, they worked out great for what we needed, we need two more for the other two burn rooms, so, uh, it's because of companies like that. And the other thing here, uh, this, the, it is for training props for propane, natural gas emergencies, et cetera, the regulators and controllers and that. And, uh, I'm also working with the, uh, Carbon County Community, uh, Career and Technical Institute on, they are building, uh, looking at building a training prop for us, they, we had, uh, borrowed one from, uh, Bucks County, and, uh, took all kinds of pictures, measurements and working with them, and we're gonna, they're gonna attempt to, uh, build that for us on, fortunately, the welding instructor, they lost and, uh, they were, I don't know if they found somebody else, but it's, uh, they're gonna try to build us, they thought it was a great project and helped save the county money. And at the same time, the students get some education on fabrication of, uh, different things, so. Okay. Further business?
Any further business? No?
Who did you do the motion to adopt the resolution?
I did not call, pull the board. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nozstein?
Yes. Okay, that's all we did, sorry.
Further business? No? Commissioners reports, Mr. Honor?
None of his time.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Nothing.
Mr. Nozstein?
Yes, I just wanna point out, we did meet with, uh, Senator Fetterman's office yesterday, uh, talked about a variety of systems, Cody Glack, or I don't know how we pronounce it, it's close, but, uh, don't wanna butcher his name, but we talked about a, a lot of things and what, uh, some of the issues we have here, uh, such as transportation, the bridges in particular, we, uh, have a county bridge that's on a state road and that, and why are we paying for a bridge on state highway, et cetera? Uh, unfunded mandates was a big thing, and I, you know, tried to express to them the, every time the state or federal government passes a law, it costs us money because it's not funded by them, we wind up, wind up paying the bills. And, uh, we've all saw it, in particular with the children and youth because of the Sandusky case, over thirty new pieces of, uh, uh, legislation, which put a huge burden on our children and youth. And, uh, the one time when they could handle thirty cases, they're down to nineteen, and they're struggling to keep that, so. Uh, communications interoperability between the emergency services going across county lines, uh, uh, dead spots in the county, uh, interstate, uh, mutual aid calls, et cetera, so we had a good discussion on that. And the, uh, we did talk about unemployment or employment in particular, you know, and, uh, the frustration, I, and I was, I'd say I was very vocal on this, is, uh, able-bodied people, you know, uh, you know, they get more money to sit at home and, and collect, especially during COVID, the people here in the county and other, uh, places where the employees, dedicated people, were earning less than those sitting at home collecting because of COVID. And we had a great number of county employees that, you know, unfortunately for them, they, they stuck with us and they got paid less to work than the other people. And we talked a little bit about the quality of the people that are applying. And a lot of times, people apply for positions because they have to apply for so many jobs or else they don't get their unemployment. And the positions that they're being applied for, the qualifications are nowhere near what we really need. Uh, employment, I'm not sure what the number is right now of vacancies we have in the county, it was thirty-five at one time. We're now down three IT people out of six. It puts a burden on the additional three people IT that we have. So, uh, hire somebody, then they turn it down before they even to, you know, spend one day in a job. Uh, what other position was it, children and youth, just hire somebody there. They resign before it even started, so, uh, and it's not only Carbon County, many counties are plagued with the same problems with, uh, getting good, qualified, dedicated personnel, so. Uh, I don't know if there were any other major discussions that we had, but we tried to convey, uh, some of the things that are happening here, uh, budget processes as well, the grants we did talk about. And that some of the grants that you do apply for, there are just so many stipulations or so many rules and regulations, sometimes it, uh, there's matching funds or the, uh, what you have to follow through and, uh, do to get that grant. It's just not cost-effective anymore, so. So we, did we meet with them, uh, hopefully they take it back to the state senator, and I think every county has to really step up to the plate and express, uh, what they're doing. And the same thing we're doing for nine-one-one, I know the County Fire Association made a motion the other night to send a, uh, letter along the lines of our resolution for the nine-one-one funding because of the lack of communication, uh, capabilities in certain areas of the county. So they're sending letters, and those letters were, the resolution was mailed to our state reps, state senator, PMA, as well as the County Commissioners Association, so. Uh, police chiefs are looking at doing one as well because it's their lives on the line out there when we don't have good communications, so. That's another major topic. Okay? Meeting adjourned. Mr. Blocker, unless you're interested in retirement? Thank you for staying.
No. Hey, gentlemen, I appreciate everything you do, and I, um, Rocky, with change orders, I'll tell you, they, they are disaster and, and everything, and they can, they can really eat up a, a job. They can really, I can't understand, if I can speak a second, yet how Boyle is your project manager, and then they're doing a job that you didn't have somebody else doing. Do you, do you know who the person is? Cause I know people at Boyle, uh, is, who's the project manager in this job? Does anyone know?
I don't, well, I don't know who's really gonna, cause I think they're gonna have that kid do it at one time, and I don't love the other.
They're several involved, don't they?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a call, but, uh, and, and what, what's actually the issue? The sa- the safety of what?
Pedestrians on the sidewalk, because if they're working on the roof, they have to put scaffolding up and the protection blanks or whatever, plywood.
Yeah, that shouldn't, I, I, I agree.
It should have been in the original bid.
It should have been.
Documents, yeah. But also, maybe it should have been in the specs, clarified in the specs and.
But change orders are on projects, I know.
Sometimes you can't avoid it when you open up a white wall and find something that shouldn't be there.
Right. Thank you, Larry, very much. Have a good day.
Let me know if you find something out, Dennis.
I will.
I've been trying for three years. I've been trying for three years.
Okay.
Uh, News Media, you gonna stick around? Should be a short meeting, I believe. Okay. Let's call, I'll now call the meeting of the Carbon County Retirement Board. The order, I'll turn it over to our Secretary Controller, Marcus Zalenchak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I'll seek a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held August seventeenth of two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Zalinka?
Yes.
Mr. Svercek, yes. Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nozstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any guests concerning retirement or business? Report of executive sessions, uh, none were held. Next, I'll seek a motion to ratify the warrant, which includes, uh, check numbers four, zero, nine, six, seven to four, zero, nine, eight, three, and direct deposit number seven, zero, two, three, one, eight, seven to seven, zero, two, three, five, nine, seven, for the month of August.
Motion.
Ratify.
Second.
Mr. Zalinka?
Yes.
Mr. Svercek, yes. Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nozstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next is the retirement activity report for the month of August. We had eight retirement refunds, uh, two superannuation retirements, one voluntary retirements, those three folks, uh, total service to the county was about twenty-four years, we thank them for their service. Uh, one death benefit. And the monthly benefits totaled four hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Death benefits of fourteen thousand, seven ninety-three, thirty-seven. Refunds totaling thirty-seven thousand, three fifty-seven, eighty-six. Total disbursement, five hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, leaving the county pension portfolio value as of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three of eighty-four million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, seven fifty-six, seventy-eight. I always give the update for the prior Friday, as of September fifteenth, we were at eighty-three million, six seventy-six, two ninety-nine. Any questions on that? Uh, correspondence, I didn't receive any. Solicitor's report?
No report.
Investment managers or other reports, and none, none were received. Any new business? Any old business? Any further business? That's it, Mr. Chairman?
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy?
Good morning, gentlemen. Um, going back to the LERTA thing, is that the Lehigh County Board project, correct, that? It's supposed to be. With regards to bridge number four, um, what repairs are needed for that bridge?
Uh, decking, sidewall, et cetera, it's a pretty expensive, uh, uh, project there. And that's on Quake Eight, just outside of, going from Hudson to Dale forward towards, uh, three oh nine.
And then why are you doing the weight limit after?
Because of the, uh, construct, or the, uh, structural soundness of the bridge, it's being reduced until repairs are made, yeah.
The barriers also that we're putting on are very heavy, right? They're gonna be weighted, therefore that's part of the weight load, so that has to be taken into consideration, yeah.
Um, now let's go back to Boyle Construction. Um, I was looking at, they have at least, you guys have hired them for at least four to five projects that I, in my memory, that I remember. Why didn't you guys hold them to the fire before all this? Like, you know, why is it coming to a head now?
I don't, I don't know, it's like I've been trying for a while, and, and you just keep going, and it keeps going, and like today, it started again. Now, over thirty-nine hundred dollars, um, if you say no, is it gonna hold them up and they're gonna stop the whole project? I mean, and that's how it is, like, why, why is it like that? I, I, I haven't gotten any answers so far. Like, why do they come in and, and have something, and I said, I just keep hearing from other contractors, you know, that, that wanna bid on this stuff? And it looks like they could do the job for maybe a hundred thousand dollars more than what is bid, and they're not bidding on some of this stuff because they think that maybe there are gonna be change orders. And then when the change orders are made, it makes it out like they're doing it. You know, and, and there's legitimate effect on this project here. I mean, uh, the, the person that was working on this, he says he doesn't, never has change orders. You know, like, why is it built into this? And what, and, and I still don't get it, it's like, well, they're gonna give money back to us. Well, if we never gave you money, how are you gonna give it back to us? But I said, built into this is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars already for change orders. They already know that they're gonna get that, and if you look at all our projects, on all the change orders, it comes very close to that contingency, what they have in there. And, and like I said, on a project like this, if you have it and you have to contain the public, that's an OSHA rule. That's not a Rocky rule, it's not a county rule, it's an OSHA rule that that should be in them specs. And, and like Wayne said, we should, I shouldn't look at it, we hired them to do that job. When Tremco did it, they did all the precautions, they called the police department, they could, if they had to close Pendot Road down or if they had to close Jim Thorpe Road, they were in all charge of that. Why don't they do that? And that I've been asking for a long time, why? You know, and now here we could sit and not pass that for thirty-nine hundred dollars, and they sit here and are gonna make, keep ma- and, and it goes on percentage, the more that the price goes up, the be- the bigger percentage that everybody gets. The more that the price goes up, the bigger, the bigger percentage that everybody gets. And I, I, like I said, it's just that design and what's in them specs. And I'm not the person that's supposed to be looking at it. They're the ones that are making the specs and they're approving the specs. And I think Mr. Blocker had a very good, you know, is that the right way to do it? Has somebody that's doing the design and then looking at the bids as everything's right? I don't know. I mean, to me, that's a conflict of interest also. But it just keeps happening around here. I don't know why. And, and like I said, we keep wasting money and we're looking for this budget. And I know, I know what's gonna happen with this budget. It's gonna come up and everybody's gonna say, well, we have to increase taxes for the salaries. Now, we're increasing taxes to cover this four hundred thousand dollars, first of all. And, and you can look at it, that it's in capital projects or anything. But the county is loaning more money than we should to do these projects to cover this. We're, 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 we're investing more in the buildings than we are in our people. You know, I, and, and I said, I, you, I, I mean, I think everybody's seen me arguing about this for like three years. And I think it's time to stop it, you know? And, and will it stop now? You know, sometimes I look at these contracts, I looked at their contract, one hundred and ninety-seven page contract for them that it more or less looks like it's protecting the other side and not protecting the county. You know, how do you get out of something like this that is an OSHA rule that should be in the bid packet and it's not? How do they get away with that? I don't know. I mean, should that go back to, is this legitimate bidding that we're doing in the county? I don't know. Because there, there's something wrong here when you put a bid out and there should be something in that. And everybody in Pennsylvania, no matter what town you work in, you have to follow OSHA rules if there's a public involved in it. And now all of a sudden, this came up thirty-nine hundred dollars to protect the public going into rebuilding. And, and this project has been, I've been asking to get this roof fixed probably for two years and now I've got thrown into the Boyle project.
Amy, let me just reemphasize what Commissioner Nozstein said, right? Ultimately, the three folks right here are responsible. We can delegate authority, we can't delegate responsibility. Contingencies that were built into the contracts that we awarded to, to Boyle, that's all on us. Oh, they gave us a number, we thought that number was fair, we voted on it, we moved forward. So ultimately, we kept Boyle on because they were meeting our requirements. Doesn't mean we haven't had differences with them. We've had some knock-down, drag-out fights with Boyle to try to keep them online, we felt. But ultimately, I'll tell you what, I've been shocked how good their estimates have been. They said it's gonna come in at X number of dollars. Ultimately, it comes in at X number of dollars and not beyond that. So again, ultimately, they were meeting our expectations that we set.
Yeah, they, what you gotta understand too is that building was ba- built in eighteen ninety-three. Now, these, the things that are being repaired, plumbing, the electrical upgrades, how many computers, uh, and everything else, air conditioning, did you have in eighteen ninety-three when the place was built? So, uh, it's things of that nature that, you know, really, you can't let them go forever. You have to bite the bullet sometimes and you have to do building maintenance, keep it upgraded and, uh, specs. You know, should we have an electrical load, overload and fire? Don't forget, one of the courthouses already burned down in this county. I don't want to see the second one. They, uh, this morning, where was the fire call? St. Luke's Hospital, in the generator room in the ceiling. How old is that building? Sometimes you have to step up to the plate and spend the money to upgrade your plumbing, your systems, uh, your plumbing, uh, you, look what happened here. Not even that old, you get a water leak and that, uh, it's, creates problems. So, yeah, sometimes you have to bite the bullet and do certain repairs. Yeah, there are things, other things we thought we should have done, but took out because of the cost. Stair treads, look at the stair treads in the courthouse and how worn they are since they were put in, so. But, uh, trying to keep the budget down, the expenditures down, for now, it's been eliminated. And, and some other things as well have been taken out just trying to keep the cost down. We have doors that are in the basement in particular that are rusting off, ready to fall off the hinges almost. So, yeah, we do have to, and we have to do a better job of, uh, maintaining our buildings on a annual basis, not wait until it gets too bad.
And contingency is for unseen projects. Okay, let's, let's get that straight out here. Because even what they were talking about, that door, now we have something for the, the electrical room downstairs or up in the building, that's probably maybe close to eight foot tall. It would not fit in the building. This was designed for the building. And that fifteen thousand dollars that I said was added on was to open the doorway up to get that in. That should have been in the print, not afterwards. You know, and, and that's what I said, contingency is for unseen events that happen, not things that should be in the project. Like I said, uh, OSHA-approved things, like who, who even has a project out there? And then they walk around with a guy that has the scaffolding and says, well, you know, you should contain this area, you should contain this area. The guy that's setting it up knows it, but it was never in the plans to have that done. And that's what I said, when we have project managers that were given hundreds of thousands of dollars away, they should know that. And I'm, I'm, I'm tired of covering. That's what it comes down to.
Commissioner Lukasiewicz, you talked about them meeting your expectations and their estimates are pretty close.
Pretty close.
But then you're looking at all these change orders where you want to take, you know, some consideration too.
But the change orders were within the contingencies for the most part, right? You know what I mean? They weren't above and beyond what the bid price was. If the approved bid was four point three million dollars, you know, they're making it within four point three. Now unfortunately, a- as Rocky said, you, they always seem to be eating up all the contingency. But again, you know, that's, I assume at times that, that's gonna happen. You're not gonna catch every, everything. And that's why you build that in there and that's part of your, your cost.
But something like this, especially today's action, um, when you're talking about a pedestrian sidewalk, you know, the scaffolding that you need, they forgot this item. They obviously forgot this item. Why is, why is it coming back to you guys having to pay for something that they forgot to put in there?
I, I think we can challenge them.
On something in that one hundred and eighty-seven page contract.
Yeah. I, I think, again, the court's gonna ha- have to look at that. But again, I'm not willing to risk to wait another week, wait another two or three months to work through this for thirty-nine hundred dollars for a potential tile falling on a person. You look at, up at that roof, you know there's some issues up there. And we can't forego that work now over thirty-nine hundred dollars. We can fight that, that fight a- another day when it comes to, are they liable because they failed to provide good advice counsel or due diligence in their job?
Need to keep this project moving as well right now. Uh, you know, they're running out of good weather. They were up there on a roof, especially a slate roof when it gets colder and more brittle, et cetera, so.
Remember, the concern is you don't fix that roof and you have the potential of leaks. You have potential leaks and anything you're doing now is gonna be taken backwards, right? So again, you gotta get this done in order for the rest of the schedule to stay on track.
And just one last thing, clarification, that eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars you're paying Boyle, that is just for this project, correct? Or is that still like kind of a?
No, that is, no, I think this is just this project.
Okay. And then, um, a few weeks ago, you, you guys had an IT breach, a security breach. Is there any update on that?
I don't think there's.
We're getting back all the, uh, systems are, you know, getting fully operational with the emails was the big issue, so. So far, so good. I mean, taking out our precautions, I would say, and ensuring it doesn't happen again, and, so. Kind of watch what I say, right? I don't wanna come back to bite you, but it's good. But there's always that potential down the line, you just never know.
Are you still looking into like the back end on what happened and everything yet?
We haven't received the final report.
Correct. It is being investigated thoroughly.
That's all that happened, thank you. Um, okay, really quick, so the, well, um, all right. So you did both know though, Rocky, so what would you have rather seen happen?
I would have liked to see them pay for it because that was their responsibility. And like I said, they are managing our project. And like I said, this was standard procedure for a project like this. And that was their responsibility to have that, not mine, not Ellie's to look for it. It was their responsibility. And like she just said, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to manage a project and you missed the most important thing, the start of it, to protect the, you know, the public or even just the employees going in and out. I mean, even if there was no public going in, how are they gonna protect the people that are employees that were going in the building? And it was two days. I think we might have been better off just letting the people work from home and shutting the whole thing down. You know what I mean? It's like, there's no options. And it's like, they throw this up and it's like, oh, we gotta do it now because it's a safety reason. No, and it, and it is, I, I understand it's a safety reason. And I wanted done, but I think they should be responsible for it. I think we have to start holding their feet to the fire. And I think that's what I get from the public, the public. And I said, I was a general contractor for thirty-five years. I hear a lot of crap coming in my phone calls about what's going on with these projects and how some of these companies are coming in here. And like I said, I hear some companies that could bid on these projects. And now are there companies gonna bid on these projects that know that there's gonna be a lot of change orders and they can undercut everybody? You know, what, what are we doing here? You know, I, I just don't get it. I just see it both sides of it. But I think, and when I went on a job and I did something, if I put something in for somebody, that's what it caused. I mean, like I said, I ran into places where maybe a wall could have been rotted. Maybe I charged ten dollars for a two-by-four to replace something. But this is ridiculous, something that here that should have been in the scope of the work, you know? And, and it wasn't. And I said, I don't think it's Rocky Honor or none of these commissioners. We hired them to do that. If we would look at every contract that comes in here, we have the attorney, we have her. If we would have to go through every one of them, how would we deal with day-to-day business? Maybe what we should do is just hire a project manager on staff here, make our maintenance guy the project manager and let him oversee everything, you know? We're, we're, we're giving hundreds of thousand dollars away that I don't think we should. And like I said, thirty-nine hundred dollars doesn't sound like much, but built into this is thirty-nine or three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And I'm sure till the end of the project, it'll all be gone.
And then is it still, is on schedule? I think the start for the, was it the inside work was October seventeenth?
Um, I, that might, well, this got moved back twenty days. This was from the fifth to the twenty-fifth.
Because they had no protection. So it's already delayed already because of a, a change order.
The inside work?
We don't have a definite start date yet.
We haven't seen the final contract. We haven't seen the final contract yet.
Okay, nothing else? Who cares?
Um, do you have any anticipator on when, um, the judges would rule on your?
No, because I asked them, all three of them, to recuse themselves based upon another case that I have pending in which they recuse themselves. So I don't see how they could justifiably not recuse themselves again, you know? But maybe ask the solicitor, he might have better insight, although he doesn't represent the election board and not this pro se filing.
Now how does this, how would that work then? Considering if they all recuse themselves, like what would the timeline and everything look for that?
Well, uh, then the court administrator would have to, uh, transmit that to a senior judge that would come in likely from the county to hear the case.
Yeah, I'm still waiting about nine or ten months on my last, the recusal. So hopefully they'll work a little bit quicker this time. We'll see.